Welcome everybody here tonight and we'll start out with the prayer and then the pledge. Steve Ayers from Lifeline Connect Church.
Let's pray. Lord, we just, we thank you for our village. We thank you for the care and the love that you give us and we thank you for the men and women that are here. Continue to give them guidance and wisdom as they lead our village and Lord, we're just going to praise you and thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
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 To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks Steve. Roll call.
Barth.
Here.
Bassett.
Here.
Beverly.
Here.
Egley.
Here.
Klepper.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
We have before you the October 17th regular council meeting minutes. Any additions, corrections?
May most to approve Ezra.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Beverly.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Klepper.
I'm staying.
Barth.
Yes.
Egley.
Yes.
You have before you the bills for your, any questions?
The 911 antenna repair, $2,400. Is that something we're going to get reimbursed for?
No.
That's for the tower.
That's fire department.
Oh, says 911 antenna repair.
That's for water towers.
Okay.
What, the antennas that they use for the water tower, that's for the west end, I believe.
Okay.
Isn't that not?
Didn't have a chance to ask earlier, so any other questions?
The concession windows for the Auburn Doors Inc., is that for the girls softball?
It's half of it. They pay half and the village should pay half.
Okay. Where, are they still working on the field four fence?
Yes.
And where did that come in relative to what we had budgeted?
About where their first budget, about where the first budget, I mean, quote came in at?
Twenty-one something?
Well, it's close to twenty-five, I remember.
They ended up saving, they kept some of the posts and repainted them instead of replacing. Say it was now like 4,000 less than one.
They're supposed to be coming next week, but next week, same show.
That two-week project they started in May.
Yeah.
That will be bad.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns?
What all did Brown and Sons Electric do in the pavilion?
They added three new receptacles in that kitchen and then they put all those wall receptacles on a different breaker. Changed all the lighting in the kitchen to LED and then they relocated the security cameras, the monitor and the DVR, MVR into a closet because it used to be out in the open. So like seemed like after every rental it was unplugged so people could plug stuff in. So they had to extend all those cat vibes and relocated that into that lot closet.
So does that pretty much wrap up the work at the building or what's left?
Yep. It should be, we're all done with that kitchen project. It's for that, but I mean, there's plenty of other things that need to be addressed for that building.
Is that going to be?
I've got a bit of money on it so far. There's a lot of different things in here under different names, but it still went to there.
Like, she got some hardware, I mean, batteries.
Pavilion rehab.
I've got it for a while ago.
Yeah, Lisa Laker Pavilion Rehab.
Yeah, that was, that was two receptacles for the main room that were broken.
Which we had, what did we have budgeted for that?
Twenty thousand, I think.
We had 20,000 for pavilion repair budget for this year, I believe.
Doesn't leave any money for moving the dirt.
No.
That's, that's.
I can, I can.
That's a whole nother monster there.
Can't we do it ourselves?
We could, but then what do we do after that? I mean, we, I got to budget something to somehow insulate those walls because I don't want to put the dirt back.
Oh.
Something, I don't know if we'll do a stucco job, a brick job, a stone job, I don't know. I don't want to put the dirt back up there. I mean, there's groundhogs living in that thing now.
Well, you know.
I know. And he did, and Brown and Sons did add switches for like the lights in the main room. There's light switches now for that and the ceiling fans. And then they did some rewiring to where they can shut the little vestibule in the restrooms off with the light switch before everybody had to get into the panel. If you rented it, you had to start flipping breakers, so there's no reason for anybody to get into that anymore.
Not opposed to, I was just kind of curious what all they did.
Sure.
They need a lot of different things done too.
Right.
Okay.
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Roll call.
Barth.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Egley.
Yes.
Klepper.
I'm staying.
Martin.
Yes.
Beverly.
Sure.
Okay, boards and commissions, minutes from the ad hoc splash pad committee.
Do you want to report on that or? Uh, yeah, I know I sent a lot of emails just for everyone to kind of look over. Hicksville Community Fund, Greg Slattery, Charlie Martin, myself, the veterans, Cheryl Denny, Kurt Collins and Kyle Jones of Standard Aquatics. We met on a couple of different, three different occasions so far talking about their goal of having a splash pad down in the park somewhere close to where the volleyball courts are located at. And we give the okay as council, a few, that's probably been a couple of months ago by now, we give the okay to come up to master plan so we could see what those budgetary numbers were going to be on three different items. One was going to be on the cost of the splash pad, which was going to be 100% funded by the Hicksville Community Fund. One was going to be the pool house and the pool and those are the three items we're going to get a price on. And so we met, we kind of went over different drawings that Kyle Jones of Standard Aquatics come up with. They were, he was hired, our company was hired by Hicksville Community Fund to come up with an idea and a vision. He'd come up with different ideas, Charlie and I set in it. We picked out different types of pools and different amenities, I guess, to the inside of it, climbing wall, double slide, things like that. And this is not a final plan whatsoever, but we were just kind of come up with ideas. Two-lane swimming, two lanes of swimming, two different, different pool designs, I guess. And just trying to figure out what that budgetary number would come in at. We did get the numbers and I sent it to everyone. The numbers are coming in for like a total project, all depends on which pool you pick. We were looking around three and a quarter to three and a half million dollars, I mean, as is without making any changes. The numbers could be less if we want to take stuff away, if we want to make things, add more things to it or make the pool larger, the prices could go up. Now that 3.2 to three and a half, that is total for all three of them. That's the splash pad, the pool and the pool house. So that was, the prices that we kind of were given. We tried to have a meeting. Kyle worked really hard to get these numbers to us before our finance committee met and Cheryl's the brains of the operation. We had to meet with her, we had a meeting scheduled, but she had a family emergency, so we weren't able to meet to go over it. So kind of give everyone an idea. I think I sent you the two different pools. I know Kyle would kind of like to keep moving forward and the Hicksville Community Fund would like to keep moving forward. One thing they'd like to get figured out is which pool the council would like to keep moving forward with. I'm not saying we're saying yes or no to it, but so we can at least keep moving forward. Funding is the biggest key of the whole thing and how we're going to fund it in timeframe. We've got to do a levy or not do a levy and that comes up to Cheryl. So we still have to meet again, kind of gives everyone an idea of the cost if we put a levy out there for the taxpayers to vote on. If they want a pool, we'll do it. Ideally, it would all be done at the same time, but I'm not saying that's feasible because I know Hicksville Community Fund would like to keep moving forward and like to have a splash pad up and going by next, by 2023. And I know for us to get a levy on there the earliest we could have anything out there would be in May and we'd have to have all that information submitted to board elections by February 1st to have it on the May levy. And so timing wise, it'd be nice if it could all be done at one time, but there is, they would have it set up to where the splash pad could be done with a bath house with the understanding that it could be added to. I mean, they're not going to look to put the splash pad right in the middle where it jinxes our whole thing where we can't put a pool in, but they'd be able to do everything. And then if, if we decide to move forward, then we'd be able to add on and tie it all in together. So separate mechanical room for everything and the biggest thing is the cost to do it and the timing and if we have the money. I know we're going to set up a meeting sometime tonight for our next finance meeting because I didn't know when Cheryl was going to be back from her stuff. So didn't know your guys' thoughts on, if you guys had a chance to look at all the 3D renderings and?
I think, I did, I appreciate everybody getting together, meeting. I think, my opinion at this point is we as council need to make a decision and commit to it. So if that means that we yes, are going to build a pool, then obviously Corey has in his numbers, some budgetary numbers to tear out the existing pool. I don't think it's wise of the village to tear out the existing pool on a whim that we're going to potentially pass a parks levy to get a pool built. I think we all agree that we need a new pool. I would be in favor of pursuing loans of some sort and getting a commitment from the village to move forward with this pool instead of waiting until the spring, putting out a parks levy. I think it's something that we need to do, obviously, because the pool's not, barely in operable condition. And I think waiting until the spring, these numbers are only going to go up and I think everybody's on board with a new pool. I would be in favor of investigating, you know, taking this conversation further to actually nail down a pool design and then figuring out actual construction costs and moving forward because there are grants out there, but we can't apply for grants until we have construction drawings. So we need to make a decision as council.
Well, how about, how about we let her tell us if there's any chance in the world that this can happen?
I will say we talked, been a finance committee a while back and she told us what we could afford and it's not that, it's not in that ballpark to.
Cheryl?
Village is in and that's, that would be a.
Can we afford it? Can we come up with it in any way? Huh?
Probably.
As a loan, not as a, just.
It would be a combination, but we can't move forward on some options till we have something solid to give to the people.
And there's always that opportunity if you want, I mean, you'd have to commit to it, but that doesn't mean you couldn't then later go for like a park levy for no other reason.
Right.
To help to make the payments on the loan. I mean, use that to pay to make the payments, but if that doesn't pass, you're still committed.
Yeah. Well, and that's the thing, I mean, obviously we've got, there's a lot of big projects for the village coming up in the next, you know, five years, which I want to hit on a little bit like with the long-term control plan, but we're at the tail end of our phase of large water sewer projects and obviously a pool like this, this investment's for the long-term, not just in the next two years. So there's, we're setting aside, what was it, five, $600,000 on average for capital projects each year at least. So that money in the next probably three to five years, depending on where that long-term control plan comes into play, we don't have allocated. And obviously you're, it's future tax revenue that we're talking about, but I think we need to make the decision that yes, we're going to commit to it, not wait until the spring so then everybody, everything can proceed. Because otherwise you're basically at a standstill because we can't apply for grants, then you're basic, they have to, the community fund has to proceed on the assumption that they're only building half the project. And then it comes spring, then it's back to the drawing board to try and coordinate the two projects. Or we're tearing out a pool right now that if it doesn't pass, if the levy might not pass in the spring, it might be four years, five years, even longer or never that we get a pool put in.
Kyle, you can correct me here, but even if we told you, hey, we're going for it, we're not going to have the pool up and going by next year.
Pool, no splash pad is a strong maybe.
Yeah.
And that is due to the time of Ohio, the state of Ohio's permitting process. Right now they're out about four months. I talked to somebody today and I heard that it's getting ready to be pushed in another two weeks. So that's four, four months and two weeks from the time that the construction plans and specifications are submitted until you might see a permit. And that would be the earliest that you're going to see it right now. So the permit process is what's going to hold up progress, not so much the planning or that, those items, that's real push. If the splash pad were to be installed separately, there's, you could extend out the other, the other side of the pool into 2024, that's not going to be a problem. But right now, even if the splash pad wants to be installed next year, you're going, the Hicksville Community Fund, the council is going to move faster probably than anybody would like because that four months is still four months even for just a splash pad. And then you have to bid it, award it, break ground. And I know a lot of the contractors in the state and I would say are boogie up or already booked up for it.
Yeah, Courtney, I talked with another company that bids on pools, stainless pools like that. He was booked out until, what did he say, Labor Day next year? For a pool, I'm not saying a splash pad. And he said a splash pad was doable too, he said a pool, he said, he's one of the three in Ohio that do the stainless pools and he said, I think everyone's booked out till Labor Day next year.
Couldn't we, I mean, everything, from what I'm seeing in the papers and stuff, everything's going great for the splash pad and the donations coming in for it. Can't we, I mean, that's a definite yes. Can't we put a definite sort of kind of maybe on the pool, but, but do the planning so that we can hook on and, you know, have, have everything ready for that and then so that we're not rushing through this. And, you know, we had talked a month or two ago, it would be nice to have a community get together and see if the community is behind this swimming pool at the time of the splash pad. That wouldn't be a bad thing, invite the public to a pool on our meeting or something. I mean, yeah, I want to do a pool. I don't want to spend $60,000 on that thing next summer to put another liner in it to last a year or two and then we spend another 60 and tear it out. I don't want to do that, but I don't want to see us getting such a rush to do this. It'd be easy to build what's already planned with, but build it to add on and go on with what we were talking pool.
I know the one question, I mean, of the two designs that we have to move forward, I know Kyle would like to kind of know if we like the rectangle one with or without lanes or the free form one with or without lanes if we're, just to keep moving on the design phase. I'm not saying we're agreeing to anything.
Looking after that, right?
Yeah, you see the operating cost was the big factor to me. I mean, kind of look at them, the free form pool was cheaper. It was $34,000 a year for a free form with, with lanes. With no lanes was $40,000 operating cost. The rectangular one was 56 and 69, it was almost $25,000 more a year to run the rectangular one. We actually liked the rectangular one a lot better, but I know Kyle said and health inspectors typically don't care for those for a lot of different reasons and it's cheaper to operate a free form one. And nothing's final. I mean, he said that many times, you know, whatever we pick, it's, it's just kind of keep moving things forward and nothing's final until you actually do the ads build drawings or nothing.
Eric, if I can interrupt for just a second.
Yeah.
So right now currently where we're at is what's called the schematic design phase. That's where we wrapped up. That's kind of just general ideas to put down so that we can have an understanding of what it could be. The master plan, once we get that finished up, it's kind of my contract is your master plan and a narrative pool. That is still not a nail down 100% let's go, this is what it's going to be. There's always going to be room for adjustment. Honestly, until there's water in it, there's just going to be room for adjustment if it's needed, so.
Just to clarify, the community fund is only paying or has committed to pay up to master plan, so further developing pool design is ours.
Mm-hmm.
So once you get to that point, which is, you want a decision, obviously, on which direction to go, but once you get to that point, what is it, once you get an answer, how far are you out for master plan?
Beginning of December.
Okay.
Master plan is completed in December and when would you go to bid?
You can't go to bid until you have the construction drawings. So that would, that would be new contract, going to the construction drawings, the specification, writing all those, going to the health department, getting preliminary, who's told yes, and having a set to submit for permit and a set to submit for a bidding. That wouldn't be until early, at the earliest, February, March of next year.
And your company will take care of all that?
Correct. So I'm contracted up through, through the master plan. So once the council or whoever's purchasing the construction documents, then yes, I would take care of all of the items at that point.
Gary and Val, you're, Val, you're the park director. Do you have any input? I haven't heard anything from you, any ideas?
I haven't ever heard nothing that's gone on.
I sent you guys a survey to fill out.
Did you?
Yeah. I emailed it to you.
When?
When did you send the survey out? Three weeks ago, a month ago?
Yeah, it was probably about a month.
I sent it to Toni because she was a former lifeguard, sent it to Charlie, sent it to Taylor, I believe, and maybe not you. I know, I know it's sent to you guys because you guys are park director and everything.
You guys need to be on board, I guess, is my question. You don't see any issues?
I guess it's kind of been involved.
Okay. Okay, council.
Personally, I don't think that myself, I can't make that decision. You can, you can because you've been, you've been involved in this.
I don't want to make any decision until we have a chance for finance committee meeting to talk to Cheryl.
Exactly. Yes, I agree with you 100%, but, but I don't see where, for us, where we can say, well, you know, we need to do this or this. Only thing I know about a pool is if you blow up all three rings, it's about that deep. Sort of that, I, you know, I've put in pools, just did one for my kid last year, but that's all I know.
Did you happen to open up, I know you said you didn't get some of the emails possibly, but the email with all the pool designs, the 3D ones that showed the, the different styles of pool?
Mm-hmm.
The rectangular one or the free form?
I like the rectangular.
That's kind of the one we all like too. Operating cost was a lot more, 25.
Why, why is this such a?
25 to 33,000.
Cost of operating it?
That'll be the answer to that question better.
That's a variation of water volume. So with the more rectangular shape, you have currently in the design, there's a diving board and some climbing walls. The climbing walls require different water depth than the diving board. It's more expensive to shallow up that floor than it is to cover operating cost for long-term in that area. If you have an area already designated as showered that has less water in it, it's already going to be designed and built that way, you're going to have less water. The operational cost comes down to water volume.
So they're all zero entry pools and they all have the same features in them, it's just the shape of it for the most part?
Yeah.
And we kind of thought for the cost difference of $25,000 to $33,000 a year, cheaper, all depends if you picked one with or without the swimming lanes, the free form would be the better option just because of what it's going to cost per year.
The free form would end up looking like, similar to what we have?
No, that's just kind of pretty much like an egg.
At what point?
Oh, yeah.
Would you need a decision to continue construction drawings for a pool, the pool portion? At what point would you need confirmation and contract signed for your schedule?
So for the?
Master plan.
For the entire pool, the entire project as a whole, splash pad, bathhouse, pool, that, it depends on when you're wanting it done. If you're wanting the splash pad in next year.
I think that's yes.
The sooner the better when we put it back. Today, tonight, tomorrow, a month from now. The only thing we are doing, the only thing that's going to happen is you're going to push the time that we did to the health department, which is going to start that month. Now, if we have a decision on in the middle of December and you say here's the contract for the entire project, we're looking at about 16 to 75 days, we'll have everything ready, maybe even quicker because I understand the push to get everything, then at least get the splash pad pulled in. Then we can get all of that ready out for the health department. If we can get it out at the end of January, then that's the goal. It's all about timing.
Yeah. So at what point would you need the decision to say yes, proceed with construction drawings for the entire pool versus yes, proceed with construction drawings for the splash pad?
Splash pad would be for next year.
Yeah.
The, you know, I think the latest you're going to get and have a splash pad next year would be the second week of January. Yes or no?
How are donations? I know there's been a lot of great people donating a lot of money and you think, you guys think you're going to be able to get the donations?
Yeah, we're, we're over 550,000 right now. So, yeah, we feel that we're reaching out and continue to reach out to different people. So, yeah, we're committed to raising the money.
And your goal is 800,000, correct?
Right.
And to backtrack a little bit, we have the splash pad, the health department, so the splash pad, we want to get it in next year, we can drag our feet a little bit only because construction on the splash pad is a lot faster than the construction on the pool or the bathhouse. Building permits are not as delayed right now as the health department swimming pools. So the bathhouse portion actually moves faster than the splash pad itself. So we could actually look at starting the mechanical bathroom stuff for the splash pad sooner than the splash pad is actually going to start construction. The other thing too is we can also look at pushing the plans for the pool back if we know it's not going to be the start construction next year to help speed up the pace on the splash pad. So our focus is on the splash pad and getting that in. We can get that permit, then we can come back and add the pool later and get that.
So you're saying as long as we have something definite to you by the second week of January, we're ready to go on the splash pad?
Yes.
And, and which will also incorporate the pool because you just said that we could add on and take off at any time after that.
Correct.
That's an.
So either way, we're not waiting until spring to be on that spring ballot for a parks levy?
I'd like to talk to Cheryl.
I think we have to.
Why don't, why don't we?
Because I know that number doesn't include.
Talk to Cheryl and have a special meeting for a decision.
Cheryl, you've done some investigating on loans currently and when we had talked, it was around $2 million that you were looking at funding. So our total construction cost here is 3.2 with $800,000 raised out there plus a $2 million loan we would be able to swing. And then we would also love to be able to apply for grants.
Correct.
We can't apply for grants until we have construction drawings. So if we're waiting till the levy, if we, if the levy is what everybody feels that is the direction we need to go, that is late spring, obviously. Then you get the green light to go ahead with construction drawings, which at that point you're probably at least 60 days out. So your pool construction's not actually happening or starting until 2024. At which point you're far more expensive and hopefully we already have an operational splash pad. But that's where I think we seriously need to look at the numbers, assume, simulate one of these for loan, assume that we're getting $800,000 from them, what's the shortfall? What's our payment look like? And proceed that way. But that's my opinion. I don't, I don't think we should wait for a levy.
No.
I agree with that. I'm going to speak, me personally, we've talked about a pool for years. I mean, we stepped up with the splash pad, raising money locally, it's huge. We talked to Cheryl, crunched some numbers, I think it's feasible. The longer we wait, the more expensive everything gets. I mean, if we would have built this pool and splash pad 10 years ago, it'd been a lot less, but that's, that's hearsay. I agree with, with Taylor about moving quickly on, on both projects, getting the plans and set, go after the, you know, if we do have to go after a levy, we'll have to a levy later, but for right now, if we can swing a loan and/or look for grants, I think that's the way to go.
That would be a key when we, when we do that is, you know, with those interest rates, we're going to have to do a little shopping.
Right.
And Cheryl's had those discussions. The village has, correct me, what was the terminology? We have the state's accreditation or the state's backing?
You know, I can't remember those letters.
Some acronym, but.
Yeah.
Some acronym, but we have the highest standing in terms of credit within the state. And you've talked with, or talked with a couple of banks currently.
And we can use the credit of the state of Ohio, not just the village of Excalibur.
Yeah. So.
I'm assuming to build all this at the same time and get all the plans done, everything in the same works, in the same project, it's gonna be less costly in the long term instead of waiting for two different projects.
Correct.
I definitely didn't think it all needs to be done at one time. No. My, I guess, I would hate to see the splash pad up and running and then the village says, yeah, we're gonna move forward finally with the pool. And as the splash pad's being used by families, you know how our parking is down there? And all of a sudden, we have all the staging of equipment, everything to tear down the old pool, have all, you know, staging of all the equipment, all the materials. And where's everyone gonna park? Where's everyone, I mean, it's gonna be a cluster there, I mean.
Or over by the dump trucks.
Yeah. They have kids riding their bikes back and forth between all the equipment. I mean, it's, it'd be a nightmare.
Yes.
And you have a nice splash pad with all the dust being created from all the demo and all the new constructions.
So do we do the demo?
No, we're looking at.
And you got some pretty good prices, I thought.
One comment that was made in our three meetings was sometimes you're better off, and I don't know if that price is, if we have a price from them at all, but better off if you hire the general contractors that's doing the site work for the pool and the splash pad. Sometimes you can get it done cheaper and they already know what they've dug up and what they found underneath and what you can maybe find locally. And so we could possibly get a price that way too.
That's my opinion. My opinion would be to try and get the same contractor.
McCordy went out of the way to get quotes and he found, I thought, a pretty good quote.
Yeah, I thought it was.
And that's the big, but the big thing is that right there. Because if you have one contractor doing the excavation, you can't guarantee that the backfill was done. I mean, it's one of those things where if you have the same contractor, it makes a lot more sense, in my opinion.
They already staged all their equipment and all the travel.
Correct.
So I think the consensus is to move forward as much as we can. Finance committee, see where the money's coming from, go from there. So we need any kind of motion to proceed, Troy?
I guess the one thing, I know he was hoping to get out of here before he left today was what's the style of pool that the majority of you guys like? Do you need that or not?
How does that affect the master plan, other than just imagery?
Imagery?
He's working on boards for display.
Looking for, get boards for display. There's currently the website's up. Got a QR code for any additional marketing or fundraising events or anything like that. That, once we have a decision, say this is gonna be the master plan and the master plan gets completed, it goes down on the website. And it's there for someone to go and see what the potential is. And getting boards printed up to put some marks for everybody to go review and say, okay, here's what we're working, here's what we have to look forward to, here's what we're working towards, here's what we're evaluating for. The difference between A and B, at the end of the day, it's not a set in stone plan, so it really doesn't affect much. If you go with, you know, A and then we go down the path of B later, I just, I don't like to make those decisions.
Do you have any idea how much it costs us to run that pool every year?
No.
Cost to run it? Depends how many.
Maybe, Val, you know, how much it costs to run the pool?
At least.
How much?
Yeah.
For chemicals, supplies, electrical, everything with wages? Is it 35 or 45,000 with lifeguards and everything?
So if we went with the better pool, the one that everybody likes for 35,000 more than the other one, we're already paying that to operate it.
But now it's gonna be, now you're gonna be $70,000 a year operating. You've got to pay wages and everything.
Our pool, that's not chemical supplies and that's. I've got, just the 2018 through 22, pulling out the 55,000 was between 35 and 40,000 the last three years.
That's with everything?
That's with everything. We only had, so we had 20, with wages being the most expensive. So between, around $20,000 in wages for pool is what we had allocated.
A lot of that was repairs that hopefully we won't have with the new pool.
Of that, we had 14,000 was capital outlay in '21. We had, obviously, we were initially submitted 55,000 for a new liner. But wages being the biggest, operating supplies is only like 2,500 bucks, 30 grand.
You had highlighted on one of the bigger expenses on that pool is the climbing wall?
Yeah, climbing wall, diving board slide.
If we eliminated, I mean, if you came down to the pool to climb a wall, you could have done that next door.
Well, I'm assuming those.
It's the variable, it's the variable depth that creates the issue. So you're gonna be shallow with the slide, deep with the diving board.
Right.
Shallow with the wall.
Right.
So it's the variable depth. So like your key components right now, I think, in the design are climbing wall and slide.
Eliminate it.
I don't think we, I mean, I think a slide's a big component of it.
It's really, I mean, the kids would love that double slide, the speed slide and the slow slide.
If we eliminate that, we basically might as well spend $55,000 and put a liner in this pool, in my opinion. Because it's gonna be the same thing.
No.
Pretty darn close.
Yeah.
The new one won't leak.
Hopefully not.
I think we need to do it right. Don't try to cut any's here and then, oh, we should have done that.
There's also sorts of other things you need to change it to now. I mean, we're not.
Well, and the big thing is you're looking at a high portion.
There could be money coming in, you know, wealthy people pass away and they leave money. I'm just saying, something could happen to help us fund this thing. But like Ron said, let's not cut corners, let's do it right. Let's pick the style you want, not something that we have to live with.
Well, that's one thing that we've made comments quite a bit. You know, you look at it and you look at our existing pool and it's kind of right over top, like all the drawings. You can't see the existing pool. My concern is, is it big enough? Is it big enough? And I know Kyle always said, you know, if you guys don't think it's, if it's too large, we can always make it smaller or give rid of some of the features to make the numbers look better. But if you guys want to have it larger and have a bigger pool, we can do that too. Your prices are gonna go up a little bit, I mean, for some. I said we want to do it right the first time, we don't want to.
Exactly, yeah.
And we can also shop around vendors as well. So currently, the splash pad, I would stick with Vortex as my recommendation for the features. The two slides we have shown there come from other projects and there are various prices between the two of them. I took the average of the two in the pricing. There are other companies out there that make slides. There are some more that are expensive, more expensive than what we have there. What we have shown, there are slides that are less expensive than what we have shown. Once we get past the master plan, once we get to the contract for construction design and we have more of a definitive target for shape, size, budget. Then we can start going to manufacturers and say, hey, this is happening, we have the money. We're looking for good, hard numbers that we can count on for slides with features for climbing walls or diving boards, filtration equipment. And we're gonna start really having the budget narrowed down. Then we can also take something like the slide. We could take four or five manufacturers and say, hey, give us your best number, give us your best number, give us your best number, here's what we're looking to achieve. Then we can pick those that fit into the budget. Once we get through the design, if you say, hey, we've got another 150,000, why don't we go with the better slide? Then we can go the back route. We can still adjust to make sure that we can fit that in. The budget numbers there are still also fairly flexible depending on where the number's coming from.
And that's the big thing. We're looking at the high line. Obviously, you want to consider worst case scenario for operations, but you're looking at 40,000 as the high side. But 27,000 is your average, 14,000 on your low side. So at this point, I think finance committee needs to get together, talk about what our options are from like a loan perspective, in my opinion. And then tonight, I mean, frankly, it's not, we're not committing to a pool design at this point. So if I think the general consensus is that we want to show rectangular pool on the renderings, then show a rectangular pool. And then we have time to then engage the public if we want to.
Yes.
And go that route. But I think as far as what you're looking for for renderings, I would be in favor of just showing the rectangular one.
I'm with you. Okay.
Any other comments? Good discussion.
Question for you. What's the longevity of this pool? Like the one that's down there was put in, we were born on the same year, 1954, me and that pool. And I just wondered, I barely made it and the pool is just now barely making it. We gonna get that type of lifetime out of yours?
Depending on how well you take care of the pool, which from what I am seeing, it does a very good job of this. You're probably looking at a lifespan of 40 to 60 years. The engineering community designs commercial swimming pools with the idea that they're gonna be there 50 years.
Good. Thank you.
I've got a question. For like a diving board, what is the minimum depth for water for a diving board?
Varies on the diving board, varies on the length of the board. Typically, I design towards FINA standards, which is who regulates Olympic diving. There's also ANZI/ANZI standards that have a little bit different design criteria. The common depth for a 16-foot, 3-meter board or 1-meter board, so like a 3-foot. Because I think the minimum depth you can have is 11 foot 6 inches to 14 foot. And then various slopes to meet the regulations.
So for like one of these slides in the rock climbing wall, would they be the same depth or does the rock climbing wall have?
So rock, the rock climbing wall, depending on which style you pick, can be from 5 to 12 feet. The slides are gonna be about 4 to 5 foot of water depth, depending on what style of slide it is. The other thing with the slides, you have what's called runout. So if you have, now like my three-year-old, she has learned how to skip herself across the water off of the water slide. She'll skip for about 45 feet before she stops. The safety line is 25 foot. Last year, she skipped over the safety line and stood up on the steps where the other kids were going out. So that's another consideration on the design, not just the depth there. With the rectangular pool, this is why the health department won't necessarily tell you no, just because it's a rectangular pool with all the stuff added in it. But they are going to make it very challenging on stuff like that. Here's the safety zone. Above the water, we can put all the ropes we want to define the space, but what happens below the water? You have somebody dive off the diving board, they're swimming, their eyes are closed, they feel the bottom of the pool, they come up. Next thing they know, they're holding their breath indefinitely and they get hit coming off of the slide. That's where the health department's going to push you and really make you jam you up on purpose to try to get you away from that. With safety concerns and extra safety zones and such.
I think it's, it doesn't get more simple than a rectangular pool at this point. So from a design, from a rendering's perspective, so if we're gonna get a little bit more elaborate and change the shape, let's do that with construction drawings. For rendering purposes, let's just show a rectangular pool. Not, we're not committing to building a rectangular pool, but let's do that to proceed, in my opinion.
Case closed.
Okay, everybody on board?
Yep.
So wait for the finance and then I guess move forward, right?
Yep.
That's the word I get. Good discussion though.
I had a quick question on it, I'm sorry.
Don't know how, dude.
Sorry. It's just, it's like, so being in the pool business and building these kind of things, it's about lifeguards. With a slide, a climbing wall, a diving board, I mean, do you recommend, is there a health department's gonna say, you have all these apparatuses? You need three, four lifeguards stationed at all times? It was just, it's just a safety.
That is a, there is a code that defines that. And they put this little line at the bottom of that code that says, more or less in layman's terms is if we want you to have more, you will have more. But they have a guideline based on square footage and patrons' capacity of the facility. And they say things like, you have to have somebody that's monitoring a slide.
Right.
Independent of the rest of the pool. Now, they could come back and say, we love the design, you're good to go build it. They come out, do their initial inspection, you have three lifeguards based on slide, eight square footage, and they go, you need an extra one for that lifeguard station.
Mandatory.
Mandatory. After the pool's.
Okay. Because we have issues with obtaining lifeguards. I mean, we've had it with our, you know, I'm not trying to deter anything.
You can provide written safety plans. You can put other, there's other pieces of equipment that help with lifeguarding, as weird as that sounds. There's other things that you can do to help the health department as well as yourselves say, hey, we have the protection we need, we have the eyes where we need it. We have the plan in place that's going to be followed and teach and preach in order to make everybody safe. And honestly, that, I mean, that's part of our service is getting that plan in place, helping you guys get that plan in place. If you submit that to the health department, that always helps them go, hey, they're not taking this as a joke, it's a serious matter to them as well. And they're not gonna be as harsh on you when they come out and say, you already have an idea of what you're dealing with there. You don't need the extra safety, the extra lifeguard for going climbing a wall.
You have trouble getting lifeguards now?
We closed two weeks early because we have lifeguards.
I would think with a brand-new facility down near the splash pad, brand-new building.
Well, I don't know that that's.
I don't think you'll have any trouble getting lifeguards.
I think it is gonna be an issue. And I hope that it won't because I know up at the campground that I go to, they have, you know, a water park. And it's actually shallow water lifeguard certified, so you don't even have to be full lifeguard certified. And they struggled this year as well. They paid the ones that they could get pretty well and they still struggle finding them. I hope that this entices people, that's the hope, right? And I looked into what it would take to get recertified because of that. You can actually get shallow water certifications online, you don't even have to go to a pool to get certified. So I don't know if that's something we need to consider with, you know, if we remove the diving board, is it then considered a shallow water pool? Is it, or no?
If you remove the diving board, shallow it up, it's a little bit easier.
Okay. So I don't, and I don't know if that'll help get lifeguards, but I do know that's an option.
I just ask that. There's things that we can put in place. I wouldn't let that prohibit the design.
Well, we've got an election tomorrow, so people might get back to work.
Okay.
I have a construction drawings question. What, do you have an idea on construction drawings, contracts, contract amounts? So if you're proceeding with this, what's your ballpark on price?
I have it, I do not know that number off the top of my head.
Above or below 50,000? Above. So that brings up the question of contracting. He's obviously started the design, if his construction.
He's engineering, I mean, you could obviously do the, I always get the initials messed up, but like the request for proposals and stuff like that. The only issue that you get, we talked about that, purchasing programs and things like that. There is a fairly recent attorney general opinion that says you can't use that for construction services. You can use it to purchase like the apparatus and splash pad features and all of that stuff, but the actual, and again, that's an attorney general opinion, which is pretty strong, but it's not, not like the Supreme Court said that you can't do it. But, so if you want to, to use a specific vendor for things like that, you could join a cooperative that they belong to. And you, basically allows you to either participate in the contracts that the state of Ohio has already done or the other municipalities in the state of Ohio. Or if it's not anybody that's actively in the state of Ohio, they even allows you to do it with people that have contracted with other states. You know, if you join that cooperative, I think is the term to choose.
So for engineering, to get to construction drawings, we have to go through the RFP process, is what I'm hearing?
Probably.
Won't we have, I mean, we will have to advertise for contractors to do this.
To do, to do. And that's what I'm talking about on the construction end.
We can't just hand it to him.
No, no.
Well, he's a designer.
He's engineering.
He's an engineer. So he's doing the design. So we have to do that for design and then also construction.
Mm-hmm.
He's also designing based on a Vortex system, Vortex features.
What I'm saying is Vortex, and they may very well belong to the Ohio purchasing or whatever. If they do.
So.
We can deal with them without having to put out the bid. We need two slides and a, you know, whatever splash pad features, we could just go right to them and say, hey, you've already either contracted with the state and you're part of this program. Or we join a cooperative from another state where they've already done it. And I'm certain, only because I know from their dealings, that's who did the stuff in defiance with the splash pad, that they know how that whole process works and what to do in order to. So basically, you gotta join like.
So we are still able to do that?
With the apparatuses and stuff like that, yes.
Actual construction.
But the actual people installing it, excavating, doing stuff like that, that would be put out to bid.
Yep.
Okay. Everybody's got their questions answered? Move along then.
Thank you real much.
For your time.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks, Kyle.
Nice drive, you had, Kyle.
Not too bad, actually.
Okay.
Greenwood, Indiana, about 20 minutes south of Indiana.
I know exactly where that's at. Have a nice three-hour ride.
Okay. Next on the agenda is council committee reports. You got the draft of the ordinance changes included in the packets?
Would just comment on that, I guess, that that's, we have a meeting tomorrow, so those aren't, there's still revisions to be made to any of that stuff.
And that's only part of them too.
Okay. You say it's just part of them, there's something more coming?
Yeah.
They're different. They're different.
I sent them to you, I sent them to her. I sent them to Tony.
I sent them to Cheryl.
Is that her?
Ronald sent me part of them.
You only sent me part of them. Yeah, cause I think there's seven total, seven different.
I think two, two different emails.
Well.
Two separate emails.
There's two separate emails.
It was two separate emails, yeah, cause I sent them separately, yeah, so I'll see which ones you got and I'll get you the rest.
I don't know what your deal is, I'm, everybody else is getting my emails.
He's getting blocked.
He may.
Okay. So we got the draft, so they're not complete. Okay. Committee reports, I see the finance committee meeting minutes, 10:25.
Yeah, well, we went over, uh, the budgets for all the departments, uh, information Cheryl gave us and some emails that was passed along to us to research. Look over at a time, uh, we also, uh, Chief Danny was here, we went over his numbers, like to get some updates on some of the things. He has sent emails with the updates on them. Also talked to Cory about getting some town numbers on his. And the main thing was, we, we needed to meet again that when Cheryl was present. Right? So we're gonna set up another finance committee meeting here tonight at the end of this, hopefully later this week.
So the A raises for next year's gonna be 3%, right? Finance committee.
I think it's voted on. I was that person. Came up with the 3%.
That was not personal.
Finance. We, we're not set in stone on 3%, are we?
You were talking about merit, weren't you?
Yeah, but I talked to Cheryl about some other stuff earlier today. I think we really need to look at changing it from 3%, 10%.
I agree with that.
I would just like to make a comment that we only have three meetings left this year, and I think it's a little disappointing that we are just now getting to hash out all this stuff. So I don't know what the delay was on all of this, but it needs to be a bigger priority, in my opinion. We shouldn't be hashing this stuff out, three, three meetings before for three readings, so.
We've been waiting on budgets to be turned in by all the department heads.
And that, yeah, that's what I'm saying, is, I mean, we're dealing with taxpayer money and a substantial amount of it. So I think it's something that we need to, it needs to be a priority in the future to get these things in on time. I know Cheryl asked for them in September, but especially with the pool and all of these other things, we're talking about shifting raises and, or shifting how we do raises, pay scales, all this stuff. There are still a lot of questions, and we have three readings left. I mean, tonight's the first reading, and I think it's just disappointing that we've had to wait this long. I don't know what's been the holdup on a lot of it, but.
Like you can blame it on your, uh, department heads.
And that's like, once again, I don't know what the delays are, but that's something we need to, it needs to be a bigger priority moving forward, as far as conversations go. That way, council has time to review, people have time to weigh in and make these decisions, and we're not scrambling here at the end of the year.
Okay. Next on the agenda is administrator's report.
I don't really have anything to add except the November 4th one, I don't think you guys got two different ones? Yeah, that was the last time, that time, so. The good news is with the, well, the, that we will not have to do that two-inch pilot hole. So that saves us 8,000 bucks right off the bat, right there.
Why don't we have to do that? Misprint.
And then I will add to this, that November 18th will be the last day that we'll go around to pick up leaves this year.
No kidding?
I think most of them brought down. Windstorm.
The wind brought all of them, I don't get fishers in my yard. I got everybody's in my yard.
He stole them.
He brought them down there, though.
And then, uh, at the bottom there, I was contacted by the property owners of, uh, 420 Swansonville Street. And that's what I handed to everybody was that Google map. And all I did was outlined the boundaries for that right-of-way. I went over the original boundaries there with that marker. They would like to see that right-of-way vacated, so each property owner would get 30 feet of that. I know he's in the process of trying to sell that, that empty lot as well. From what I understand, that Houston's additions, that at some point that was going to be an access road to the park. Well, we know that's not gonna happen anymore. I don't, I don't know why the village would wanna hang on to that right-of-way, we don't have any, we don't have any water, we don't have any sewer or anything back there. Uh, directly behind that would be about left-center field of the softball field right there.
Why don't we sell it instead of giving it away?
I don't know if we.
It's right outside an alley.
It's right-of-way.
It's right-of-way. It's not like a lot that we own.
Who would buy that?
The guy who's already got his driveway and it's.
60 feet, most lots in this town are only 50.
That's the side, I mean, yeah, that's the width of a lot, pretty much. What does the process look like? I mean, do either owners just absorb it?
Yeah, what happens is, um, and there's various ways the council can do it on their own. I think with right-of-way, the council has to do it on their own, but it's similar to vacating an alley where, um, you, you vac, there's a petition process or a resolution and a publication, and then it's voted on. And then basically what you could do, what happens is, you basically just draw a line right down the center of it, and half goes to the property on this side, and half goes to the property on that side. And then it just becomes part of, part of their real estate. And then like, if you were to read their legal description, whatever this is, lot number, whatever, in Houston's addition, plus the, I don't know my directions here, but the western half of lot number, whatever, you know, would be what their legal description would be, like if they went to sell it. But it is, it's similar, but a little different, like up here on, um,
Arthur.
Yeah, Columbia, remember where the, uh, down from the hospital where they're technically on, on the map was a road that extended out there into that field? And they vacated that, and half of it went to the property owner on each side. I mean, similar to that process.
Well, this is a good sizable lot, and we're always screaming about how we need housing, somebody put house in.
Can you vacate a lot and hang, like, can we hang on to the property?
Go, uh, vacate and keep it, you know what, I'd have to look into that to see if we can do that. I think the anticipation is if you vacate it, you're saying it's no longer needed for village purpose, that's the only way that you can vacate it.
It's not needed for intended purpose.
Right, right. I, I, I could look into that, but I'm not sure.
I'm not opposed to vacating and absorbing, or having the, the owners absorb it. Obviously, the guy with the house there, or Gal, I'm not sure who, who lives there, but, uh, that would put them in a tight spot. Doesn't look like they really have space to put a driveway in on, uh, in between the property line of their house and that garage. I know this, their same condition is just up the road, actually, as you head out of town. I, I guess I don't really have a, I don't have a, I don't have a reasonable objection to go against vacating it.
Would you, if you owned that lot, would you give it away?
If I owned it?
Yeah.
We don't own it.
But if you owned it, if you owned that 60 by 100 lot, would you give it away? Just give it to somebody?
Well, they've been using it, so the conditions are a little.
You didn't answer it.
No, the conditions are.
It's a simple yes or no thing.
That's not a simple yes or no thing, because the conditions are a little different, their driveway's been established there for however many years.
It's probably croaching.
Well, it was established as a roadway, it was dedicated.
Do whatever you guys want. I don't see why you'd wanna give property, real estate away.
Troy, you gonna look into it?
Yeah, I mean, I can get the specifics and get back to everybody's in an email and what would be involved and.
Okay.
Um, next, I've got a couple of questions for Cory. Where, where are the volleyball courts being relocated to?
Um, they were gonna go between the varsity field and the basketball court.
Oh, okay. And then, is the existing, the one that's not really being affected by the splash pad, is that one gonna stay? Or what becomes of that, or that just becomes grass? That just becomes grass?
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
I know you had quoted a price for that.
Yeah.
Can we do any of our work? Can our employees do anything?
We could. A lot of it is, the cost of the sand is, the materials are ridiculous on price. Um, out of that 35,000, I think about 15,000 of it was labor. So, I mean, we could potentially do it, it's just, how long is it gonna take us to do it? We're not gonna be able to dedicate a week or two weeks, whatever it may be, to do all the work.
Well, we got some time, though, it doesn't have to be done in a week or two weeks.
Right.
Save us some money.
I mean, we'll still have, we'll probably still have 25, you know, 20, 25,000 dollars in material.
And that, does that include shifting the poles? You reusing the poles that the, that the nets hang on? There's just no electrical hookup?
Right, that is to, you talking about this 35?
Yeah.
Yep, that's.
So that's pouring foundations for those?
Poles out, we would repaint all those, we would repaint them in-house. And then, um, Johnny would reset those poles where they needed to go. I've talked to Rick from SMTA about plowing in all the electrical. I haven't even gotten a price from Darren. We could, we would pull right from the, from the meter and the panel at the basketball court. We'd come right over from that. We'd use the same photo eyes, and so they'll all be on the timer and set a photo eye, so. We would reuse the actual light fixtures that are on there, cause I think those are all LEDs now as well on the volleyball court.
Do you have those numbers worked into 23's budget? And then, I know one, a while ago, we had talked about upgrading basketball backboards. Is that in budget as well? Okay.
Yep, the only thing I've been waiting on a callback to just kinda have that current basketball court sprayed, have the cracks sealed. And even if it doesn't get lined in real pretty, as long as we can do something to preserve what we got. I'd hate to be sitting here in three years saying, you know what, now it's time to tear it out and redo it.
They're a lot of use. Yeah.
And then, I, Jimmy and Jesse, I think, were, they, they sat in the plow a lot that, this, like, last year. Do we have enough people with CDLs to plow snow this fall or this winter?
Uh, see, we got, we got Joel, we got Bug, we got Troy, we have Mike, the four. Which, we only got the one truck that consists of a CDL.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for Cory?
That's all I got.
Okay, thanks. Solicitor's report, Troy.
Uh, first thing I got's, uh, first reading ordinance 2022-09 by caption only, an ordinance to amend the annual appropriations ordinance and declaring an emergency.
Cheryl, did you get that updated?
Um, yeah, the 50, are you talking about the 54 or 5?
Yeah, well, the numbers don't match up. So like, the 70,000 and 54 or 5, that's the difference of 14,500, 15,500? Not 10,500? So the total should be 20,483.79 cents? Not 15,000?
Right. You are correct.
I sent you an email about it, and you answered yesterday that you were gonna check into it and.
I was looking at even further back from the beginning when it was 74 or 5. And that didn't work because there, they didn't, wasn't enough money in the, um, estimated resources, so.
I don't know if those numbers are right.
Yeah, it got changed to 54 or 5. But they need more money for the rest of the year. We still have four more paydays for police pension. The other one is county permissive tax, that's where we ask for money.
Yeah, that one's, that one's right. I was just saying the difference between the, the difference that you're asking for for the total amendment's not right.
So, just to clarify, I guess, the county permissive tax, we are receiving more money? We receive more money? Am I reading that correctly? And then, for the police pension, we're pulling money out of the general fund?
And putting it in police pension, yes.
And what's the reason, I guess, for that? Isn't, what's the increase in the pension fund?
There's not enough money sitting in the appropriations right now to pay it or for more paydays.
What's the? So, just for the pension fund, but we have enough money for wages? Is that some, I guess, why are we, how is that, what's the? If we have enough for wages, why didn't we set enough aside for pension fund to begin with?
They have, they run off two pensions, um, cause they have PERS and police and fire. Police and fire, it's a miscalculation for me.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Don't mean to call, don't mean to call you out. I was just, I'm, education.
It's okay.
Everyone makes mistakes. What's that number, 25,000?
Well, no, it should be the.
15,5.
The total should be 20,000, should be $5,000 more than what it shows.
20,43.
Yeah.
Not a bad. I can't add.
You want to suspend the rules?
Yes.
I want to suspend the rules.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Barth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Pepper?
Yes.
Second, third readings of ordinance 2022-09 by caption only, an ordinance to amend the annual appropriations ordinance and declare an emergency.
So move.
Second? Roll call.
Barth?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Pepper?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yep.
Martin?
Yep.
Uh, next is ordinance 2022-10, uh, first reading by caption only, um, annual appropriations ordinance of the Hicksville judge. Next is, uh, first reading ordinance 2022-11, uh, first reading by caption only, an ordinance establishing pay ranges for village employees. Next is resolution 2022-18, first reading by caption only, a resolution of the village of Hicksville, Ohio to enter into a contract with Choice One Engineering, provide professional engineering services for the Maple Lane sewer separation improvements and declare an emergency.
Question on this, what is this project, what, isn't this the one we were trying to sort of remove from the long-term control plan?
No, this is the one that I was trying to get. We were trying to remove that pond from the northeast neighborhood. This whole Choice One and the EPA is one of, is really the big culprit of, what took me so long to get my budget numbers in? Cause I was waiting for the EPA to give the green light saying, yep, we're gonna go ahead and remove the Arthur Street, Shaw Terrace and that whole pond. And allow us to do, um, this Maple Lane separation. And then I was waiting on Choice One to give me a engineer's estimate on that as well, so I could put all that into the budget. But, yeah, this is the one that we were fighting to get.
So this one, just can you refresh my memory, consists of separation from, like, Maple Lane to NIMCO?
Maple Lane, just Maple Lane itself.
You're gonna take the farmer's tile out and do something with it?
Yeah, yep.
And we gotta engineer that? Pay for engineering and all that stuff? We can't do that on our own?
We don't have an engineer.
You don't need to be an engineer to take a tile out of a tile and move somewhere else.
Changing the plan with the EPA, though, they wanna see numbers and they wanna see a plan and they wanna see, okay, if you're. There's, there's, there's some other, um, I guess, we call them catch basins in people's backyards that are tied into that as well. And some of them tie right into a lateral, that all gotta be removed and redirected into a storm sewer. The storm sewer, I'm, I'm gonna guess is gonna go right down the middle of the road there.
Of Maple Lane?
Yep. Now, that'll tie right into that catch basin right there on the corner of Maple Lane and Musa Argon. And then that, that goes through a 15-inch.
It's a 15-inch concrete that goes over to behind the, the hospital?
Yep.
To through that field?
Oh, I'll need that field, yep. And you said you did get EPA approval for the change order? Yeah, so af, after this project is complete, um, we just got one more hurdle on phase two, which is the Defiance Avenue lift station. And then, fingers crossed that they don't have us do the high-rate treatment system at the plant, which would be the phase three. I got a good feeling that this will take enough storm water out. And then, along with the lift station as well, which the lift station, it's got a lot of infiltration on Oak Street. The, a lot of roots and stuff like that, and we talked about upsizing it. But I also wanna look at maybe replacing a section of it and then lining the rest of it, just for cost purposes. Could save a lot of money.
That was kind of the plan after we got into it heavily anyhow, wasn't it?
No, the origin, when, when I took over, it was to tear that 15-inch out and put a 24-inch.
All the way to the plant, right?
All the way up to South Main Street. But I don't, I don't know if we would actually need to go a 24-inch. Choice One doesn't believe that we, they think the 15-inch would be suffice, but that's, wait for another day.
So this, so the, back to the, the resolution, so this 19-2 would actually, wouldn't be paid out till 23. be paid out till twenty-three, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
This is just their engineering, their engineer's estimate's like two hundred and thirty thousand for the project.
Okay. Then I guess the purpose for emergency is just to get, get everything executed?
Get the contract signed and get them going.
So, we had somebody suspend the rules yet?
Taylor did.
Okay, second?
I'll second that.
Any other comments? Roll call.
Martin?
Yes.
Pepper?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
So, resolution twenty-twenty-two dash eighteen, second and third reading by captions only, a resolution of the village of Hicksville, Ohio to enter into a contract with Choice One Engineering to provide professional engineering services for the Maple Lane sewer separation improvements and declaring an emergency.
Sub move.
A second.
Roll call.
Barth?
Yes.
Pepper?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yep.
Martin?
Yes.
And then, uh, the last thing is, uh, resolution twenty-twenty-two dash nineteen, first reading by caption only, enter into a farm leased with Troy Farms LLC for farming land adjacent to the new well field and declaring an emergency.
I have a question on that. Though we're in there, do we have a, a time limit?
There's a lease that I, I don't know if Cheryl set that out, I emailed it to her today. It's a one-year, automatically renews for five more unless you give notice, uh, sixty days in advance of it expiring for a given year, just automatically. Instead, originally, it had said six years, but I did it as a one-year with an automatic renewal clause, but either side can give sixty days' notice before it renews and say, hey, we don't want in this time. It also...
The one that he's gonna sign says all.
Well, I mean, it's in there, I mean, I guess he hasn't seen it yet, I just finished it today, but, um, the other provisions in it is basically, it allow, on thirty days' notice, even in the middle of the term, it allows us out, and then it sets forth, like, um, if he's already done work and got stuff in there, what we'd have to pay him for that. It also puts in provisions that if, even while he's farming it, if we gotta get on there for something to do with their well field or whatever, and he has crops that are damaged, how to calculate what we would owe him for the damage to the crops.
So that B-structure's all in the lease?
That's in the lease, yeah. Cheryl, I emailed that to her today, I was, finished it up over the weekend and emailed it to her.
I want to suspend the rules.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Beverly?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pepper?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Second, third reading, a resolution twenty-two dash nineteen by caption only, resolution for the village of Hicksville, Ohio to enter into a farm leased to Troyer Custom Farms LLC for the farming of the vacant land adjacent to the new village well field site and declaring an emergency.
Second. Can you, any other discussion? Roll call.
Barth?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Pepper?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Martin?
Yeah.
Corey, the other thing is, I don't know if you, do you have, like, a legal description for that land or anything, something like into the, um, because I, I did it in a way that that could be attached as the exhibit to it to describe what it is, so, I didn't, I didn't have that. Uh, yeah, you can email it to me and I'll glance at it and make sure it's what I need, and then I can...
And you might, you might even have it from some emails.
I might.
You were going back and forth with AEP. They, they needed all that stuff as well.
Okay. I can look at my email then tomorrow, and if not, I'll let you know, you can send it to me and I'll look at it, and then I'll give it to Cheryl to attach to it.
Okay, any other questions for our solicitor? Do you have anything else, Troy?
That's it, I mean, the, we got those, um, pieces of legislation that I, I did for the committee that are still being discussed and looked over, so I assume in the coming weeks, we'll have something on that.
The lot goes up on the nineteenth.
Is that right? Ask somebody other than me.
All right, number nineteenth, that one?
That's what the sign says.
Right here, in this room, in this room, for the corner of Arthur and Main.
Yep.
Okay.
That's all.
Any questions for Troy?
But, uh, I don't wanna, I guess I don't wanna talk about prices for that lot. Hasn't been discussed.
You say you do or don't?
Hasn't been discussed. Should be going to executive and talk about that for just a minute.
Okay, what do you want?
Okay, you wanna do it at the end and talk about it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Department has, police chief.
I don't really have anything except for, and I don't know if I need to go through police and fire first. Our last day for the applications was the thirty-first, we've only got three applicants. I wanna make a recommendation, if I can, uh, to hire one as a part-time. He's already a village employee. He had applied a year ago for part-time, so, I don't know if I'm allowed to do that or not, but, um, I talked to Cheryl about it.
Why wouldn't you?
Huh?
Why wouldn't you be about?
I didn't know if I had to go through police and fire first.
As long as I recommend, I'm guessing.
So, I want to hire Drew Ward as a part-time officer.
What was the name again?
Drew Ward.
Okay.
He's got all his training?
Yeah.
I'll be there.
So, he applied last year, uh, when we were hiring, uh, but he only went part-time. I had one guy resign from the part-time staff, so, uh, he'll also be an asset to my office as an IT guy, so...
I'll recommend that he hires part-time Drew Ward.
I'll be right behind your recommendation, Matt.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Beverly?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Clipper?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Uh, other than that, I think I emailed out numbers.
Yep, got them here.
So, unless you guys have some questions, I guess.
Any question for the chief?
Any major things you're seeing that we need to address in the community? Doesn't lie, I don't see any trends in, in calls or anything, but anything you're seeing that, help out, see?
Blue, we had, we had, and which we're, we're going to make in a restaurant, with someone leaving some notes on some ladies' cars, uh, and there will be something coming down the pike here on that, uh, so, but we haven't, I don't wanna say the key word. So, you know, we're, we're, you know, we're already almost halfway through, well, I guess not halfway through, but December's always the month that has killed us since I've been here. So, nothing has happened good for me in this department in December, so let's...
Christmas?
With your, with, I'm sorry, with Drew coming on board, part-time, is he gonna throw him, with numbers being low, uh, work him in the, some shift?
Yeah, we'll have to train him a little bit, so, and, uh, but he, I'm assuming, I don't know how much he, he gets to do, he'll remain with Polton County Sheriff's Offices at Reserve Two, uh, so I don't know, I know they use Zurker, which is the same database that we use, so I don't know how much he gets to use that, so, and with his knowledge in computers and technology, I'm sure he'll pick up, pick up.
Okay, any other questions for the chief? Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. G.
Fire and EMS, Bruce?
I gotta thank the chief and his, who was on duty with you the other night, the other day? When you guys got some smoke inhalation? They went in and, uh, primarily was starting to search, is that, is that how it happened?
Well, we went in and put it out because it was...
Oh, it was starting to climb up the wall?
Yeah.
Well, I gotta thank you anyway, but now you know how we act. So, he got a good whiff to, of, uh, smoke, sent him to the squad, sent, um, who's with you?
Tate.
Tate. Also sent Tate to the squad too, just for rehabilitation, so, just because he's not a fireman, we go the same way we always do. You're in, go to rehabilitation, then you come back. Second of all, we have a Feather Bingo Saturday night, and got some good news. Next week sometime, we should have a truck being delivered to, uh, Creatorsville, and then from Creatorsville, it'll come back to us, but we gotta go down there and look at the specs, see if everything's done to the, to it the right way. Any chip, paint, they will have to take care of before we sign off on it, everything will have to be by the contract, what was, uh, built. So, other than that, I don't have anything else.
Anybody got any questions for Bruce?
What's your guys' plans for the old tanker?
I know we can't keep it, so I'm assuming, and Scott and I really haven't talked about it yet, but I'm assuming we're gonna have to put it up for bids. We can't keep it, which is a shame, because that's that two thousand gallon going down the road, also with the three thousand, also with the two thousand of our trucks, so we'd have a nice party right there with plenty of water, but I think we're gonna have to maybe put bids out on it, I think that's how we do it.
If you wanna put it on gut deal, let me know.
Okay, all right.
Did you take enough horsepower in this new truck?
Did I, what? I'm sorry.
Did you need enough horsepower in this new truck?
Oh, yes, yeah, very much so.
It's electric.
Long half-hundred twenty to it.
Well, for motor, didn't you?
You know what? I don't know, I don't know. I let that go with Scott.
Probably an automatic?
Yes, yeah, nobody can shift anymore.
I still can.
Yeah.
Thank you, Bruce. Yep.
Thanks. Park director, you have anything?
Not really, we're just winding down, getting things winterized and getting the leaves and putting things away.
Okay.
Down into the low twenties. Gotta make sure everything, just going to freeze, is not someplace that can freeze.
Okay, Cheryl, you're up, fiscal officer report.
If anyone has any questions, not about my addition, but my fun status, and if you notice, the, um, income tax is looking better, a lot better, but also remember that in October is when people with extensions have to pay by, so that always, October always looks good. And if you have any questions about the other income tax, utility, mayor's court, franchise fee, report for media com?
Anybody got any questions?
Mayor's report, remind everybody the big election tomorrow at the Empower Church at nine-two-two-eight Hicksville, Edgerton Road, where it's always been, all the precincts in Hicksville go there. The offices will be closed next Friday because of Veterans Day, and I'm gonna thanks the veterans, we, many freedoms that we have, and I wanna thank them. Congratulations, the Hicksville volleyball, uh, they were in the reg- regional finals, so one more win, they'd have been down the state, and they had a great year, so, um, and I see Northwest State is gonna have a veterans, a free lunch over at Archbald, if you wanna go. It'll be Thursday, November the tenth, at Archbald, they're at eleven-thirty to one, so if any veterans want a free lunch, um, and that's all I have. Anybody got any questions for me?
Have you gotten an update on Erica at all, or Mommy Valley, on comprehensive plan?
I talked to Dennis, what's his last name? Weaver, now Weaver, Dennis.
Miller.
And he was supposed to get me the, and he gave me a ballpark figure, around twenty grand.
Have you translated that or given that information to the finance committee, just to make sure that that's budgeted for this next year?
If, yeah, he was supposed to send me an example, like Striker, and then Polton County, and never has, so, uh, I can call him tomorrow, but it, his estimate would be twenty thousand.
Actually, actually pretty affordable.
Yeah, if you'd have a private, it'd probably be seventy, eighty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So if you wanna put it in the budget, that's just a rough, he was, it was a week ago, a week and a half ago, I talked to him, and he said he'd get right on it, but he's, his desk was pretty full, so I'm gonna have to call him. If you wanna put that in, that's a master plan, I guess you call it.
Comprehensive, yeah.
So that's an estimate, twenty grand.
I would like an executive session to discuss a possible sale of land.
Second?
Very short one.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Barth?